As the temporary chair of the council, I call an organizational meeting from April 19, 2022 to order. I will preside over the meeting until such time as the council elects a council president. Melissa, can you call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Can we stand and do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the election of the council president is the first thing on the agenda tonight. The council rules use Robert's Rules of Order for nominations. I will take nominations for council president from the floor, and we'll continue to take nominations until such time as nominations are closed. There are two methods for doing it. You can nominate someone and then make a motion to close nominations and then have that vote, and if they don't get enough votes, then we move to the next one. Or you can take multiple candidates with the first nomination and then close and go through that motion. So I open it up for council nominations.
I nominate Greg Waters.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? If they're not, I will close the nominations and have Misty take roll call for Greg Waters as council president. You ready, Misty?
Yep. Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Mr. Waters, you're now the council president. You're in charge of the meeting.
Thank you.
You can come back and sit next to us again.
Lot of stuff tonight.
Yeah.
Can you turn that microphone off if it's not?
Okay.
Oh, thank you. All right. First off, I'd like to thank the council members for being so professional this past year. I know that COVID was kind of a unique situation, and we all kind of got pushed into, not pushed into city government, but city government changed during that time period, and there was an opportunity where there was a lot of first-time council members, and I think we learned a lot last year. We had some big issues with the boat landing. The, what else was there out there last year? There, I know that we had the ARPA funds, we had the wastewater treatment plant, and we have a lot coming up this year with the city manager search. That's, that we started that process a little bit tonight in a workshop. EMS issues, of course, going to be huge this next year, and financial impact of the inflation that we're seeing out there now, so there's just, just a lot of challenges moving forward. So, you know, I look forward to this next year, and I know that, that all of you have been very good about taking on new challenges and not, not ducking any votes and trying to move forward with it, with the community and do what's right for the community and get that input from the community. So, thank you, and at this point, I guess we'll move forward with a vice president nomination.
Mr. Waters, before we move ahead, I would just like to thank you for your leadership during this first year because we were such a new council, yourself included, and I think you were just the perfect person for that, and I think this vote bringing you forward as president for another year shows our confidence in you, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, so at this point, the election of council vice president is open for nominations.
I nominate Steve Fields.
Is there a second? I'll second Steve Fields. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate myself, Lisa Curler.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Great. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations. So we have two candidates. Steve Fields and Lisa Curler, and they're both wishing each other good luck on this, so that's, that's nice. I'm not sure what that means. Does that mean you want the position or you don't want the position? But I'm going to go with the, the first one that was nominated. Steve Fields is up for, for a vote. So can you, Misty, can you do a roll call on Steve Fields for vice president?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Okay, that's three no and two yes.
All right, can you do the roll call for Lisa Curler as vice president?
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Can I ask a point of clarification? So the first vote is done with, and now we can move on to the second vote, and that's what we're voting on now.
Correct.
So I'll throw eye on this.
That is four yeses and one no.
All right, so congratulations, congratulations to Lisa Curler. You're the vice president. Can you guys switch chairs?
Do you want to switch tonight?
Sure. Thank you.
Musical chairs.
Yeah. I'm taking this. Oh, yeah, we can switch too.
Steve, thank you for your, your service as vice president last year. It was greatly appreciated having you there and poking me every once in a while saying that person's time is up, you got to close them down. I appreciate that every once in a while.
Right-hand man's job.
And welcome, Lisa. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Number six would be correction and/or approval of city council minutes of April 5, 2022. Is there comments on that? Seeing none, can we have a motion for approval?
I move approval of the city council minutes from April 5, 2022.
A second.
All right, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidno. All in favor? Aye. Raise your hands. That's a 5-0. All right, correspondence. I'll go ahead and start on the correspondence. I've had several Sandy Beach restaurant recommendations or inquiries, and one boatlift, actually, so a reoccurring issue. I had a letter on a Main Street bubbler in the downtown area that was removed a couple years ago, and I had a comment about the Easter egg hunt, how that was, was not voted on or moved forward in our last meeting. Ms. Curler, do you have any further correspondence?
Let's see. I also had the, I think we all received a comment about the council not voting on the Optimist Club's fee waiver request. I received a contact providing some history on city buildings and related to the RLEC, a questioning of the purpose for the Economic Development Commission, and just today, some questions on the role of the Public Works Board in determining impact fees.
Mr. Fields?
I had a similar email about the Optimist Club last week for Easter, also about an email encouraging us to move forward with the restaurant at Rock Lake. Had phone calls on questions about one of our new ambulances being delivered for fire department, and question, phone call about what's the next direction or what's the movement on the boatlifts down at Sandy Beach.
Okay. Ms. Quidno?
Much of the same, but I, I think the only one that's different is that I received correspondence with regard to Harvey Road and the speed limit on Harvey Road. I forwarded that information to city staff and received response with regard to how that would be addressed.
Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I had similar correspondence regarding the council's decision not to take up the Optimist Club fee waiver last week. I had a correspondence in support specifically of Shoreline Beach Bar &amp; Grill, that proposal for Sandy Beach. I had a correspondence more generally to replace the restaurant in supporting keeping the look and feel of the downtown, and, okay, I think, I think that's it, actually.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to questions and public comment. Bear with me, I did not bring my glasses tonight, but I'll find the right distance here. There is no public hearing tonight, so the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you 've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So the public is welcome to talk at this point. Is there anybody here that would like to address council?
I just have one question. I noticed that the survey came out about an hour ago, the planning survey, and I'm wondering if there's any other avenues that the public is going to be able to answer that survey, or if it just is on Facebook, Facebook.
I'm sorry, can I please get a name and address for the record?
Mary Doyle, 325 East Washington Street. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So Ms. Doyle, are you commenting on the comprehensive plan survey, that Survey Monkey that's on the website?
Yes, exactly.
I've seen that out there for a couple days now. It must have been posted on Friday or over the weekend, something like that? On Monday? Okay, okay.
It will be in paper form, though, so you can pick it up here and at the library and a couple other places in paper form.
Okay, good to know. Library, here, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
For those of us who are technically challenged.
Is there any other, anyone else would like to address council tonight? Is there anyone online? It looks like it's all city staff. All right, I'll close the public comment session. We'll move on to city manager's report. Mr. Wilkie?
I provided you the TDS presentation for information about that coming up, and then the check register and the voucher summary, so unless there are any questions, that's all I have.
So on the TDS presentation, what's the timeline? It seemed more informational, but it seemed like they're, they're trying to move to, to come to Lake Mills at some point.
I think they want to have their permitting stuff ready to go by the fall and then start construction sometime next spring, and then it'll be about 18 months. So probably from April of '23 until, you know, sometime in the fall of '24, they'll be in construction, and they'll do it by zones. Don't know exactly how they're going to zone the city up yet, but they'll, they'll try and just have a couple crews in and, and work through each zone.
So I'm familiar with Spectrum. Is Spectrum the only current service?
You can give Frontier, but it's not a fiber, and I think that's it right now. Spectrum is it.
All right, so this would create some competition in the marketplace.
Yep. TDS and Spectrum are overbuilt in a lot of areas in the Madison area, and they're starting to spread out into their regions, which is a lot of the Midwest and then some areas out west. So, yeah, they're, they're looking at going into direct competition with Spectrum.
Yes.
Are they planning on getting out more for rural parts of our, of our area, including the town of Lake Mills? Because I know that there are parts of Lake Mills in which the, the internet is really poor, so I don't, I just wondered if that was going to be.
They will work with the town of Lake Mills and the town of Astland and the town of Belford, where they're going to overbuild. Spectrum has some in those areas, but they, they don't spread out far into the, you know, depending on how regional or how rural it gets, you know, what the population per mile is. I doubt that TDS will do much different. They'll probably try and be right into the direct competition with Spectrum and all the, the more densely populated areas, but, so they will be working with the towns.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Mrs. Bishop?
So what I'm not clear on from this conversation, is there going to be action required from the council at a later date for any of that permitting or a lower board?
They have a right to be in the right ways and the easements, some of the easements, depending on how they're framed. They probably will be looking at some comments on the style of pedestals and the locations and design of their, their main boxes, which are more like a small building. So you'll probably see some of that at some point in time, but that's probably it. They don't, they don't, state controls the, the franchise now, so we don't have a right to say no. We just have a right to say, you know, if you're going to attach to our poles, we have to get a pole attachment agreement, and then we have to have an MOU on some other types of joint operations. And then obviously, you know, they're going to want to be in some of our easements that we control, and so how we do that, and there'll probably be a lot of conversation and a pretty heavily reviewed permit.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
The next, the next item, which is acceptance of minutes from Public Works Board, the agenda states April 12th, that's the April meeting date, not the minutes that were brought before you guys of March 8th, so I would just recommend that we bring those back at the next meeting for acceptance with the proper date. Sorry, I just noticed.
Is the March 8th date stated properly in the, the minutes?
March 8th are the minutes that we intended to bring forward, but the agenda says April 12th.
She's concerned about not properly posting for, for public information, so the next time we.
Mr. Waters?
Yeah.
It's 12th over here, it's 8th here.
Yeah, I see that. Thank you.
I apologize, I just saw that just a few minutes ago.
All right. Right, I can just pass that. So we'll just strike number 10, and we'll come back to that next meeting.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a discussion decision on bid award contract LM 1-22, concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance. So that is a city council motion 22-4-2-1. Misty, can you read that?
City council motion 22-4-2-1, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance contract LM 1-22.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to approve motion 22-4-2-1, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance contract LM 1-22.
Second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidno. We're open for discussion. City staff, can we have some feedback on that?
Thanks, Steve and Greg. Bids were taken, and two bidders, Schwaeger Concrete and JW Schultz. In previous years, the last two years, Schwaeger Concrete has had the low bid and has been the contractor for this type of maintenance contract, so we've had experience, we've had good experience with them. As far as the bid tab itself that we presented in the packet, the number on the opinion of cost based on our 2021 prices, the actual bid came in about 6% higher. Typically, I would add 3% to the, to the 2021 or the previous year's bid for inflation. I didn't in this spreadsheet, so just be aware of that, and it still is only 6% higher in consideration of what inflation is currently doing in the marketplace. So based on that, and fuel prices and supply chain issues, I do believe that the prices are reasonable for this timeframe in this year. Questions that might arise, where is, where are the dollars coming from? If you go back to our, our budget, we have sidewalk repairs of 15,000 in the assessment account. Also, the budget includes 15,000 of sidewalk repairs throughout the city in the general capital budget, as well as 250,000 in street maintenance. Now, we've talked about modifying street maintenances in, in previous meetings, and we're not anticipating that we would spend the entire 250, but some of the dollars is projected for sidewalk repair in the Brookstone area in anticipation of the SDP local funding that we are awaiting results on. If that occurs, then many of the items that are in this bid will be done in preparation of that project. If not, there are other sidewalk areas throughout the city that could be maintained, and as you have, as, as has been decided in a previous meeting, we're not, we're just delaying the work for one year to try and get that funding. So in a sense, it's a little bit of preparation, it's a little bit of continued maintenance that we normally do. In addition, although it's not in, in the budget as a line item, typically these sidewalks also are used for utility repairs, for sidewalks and curb and gutter that's damaged for water main patches or sewer or electric patches. So there's usually about 10% of this contract that is paid by the utilities as well. I'll open it up for questions.
I just wanted to note that, that Public Works did recommend this motion to the council as well.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any questions? Mrs. Bishop?
So the city's computed total in our motion is $500 less than the contractor's total. Have we reconciled that with them?
Yes, I've had conversation with them, not specifically about that. We've had this issue in the past. It's a multiplication error, and so in the contract, and I'll defer to Dan, but in the contract, the unit price controls, and all it was, was a math error.
Okay.
Once that math is done, we, in the bid tab, you see that there's a contractor total that was their total. If you do the math, it comes out as 6,000, and it's a $500 difference. In the past, that's not been a problem, because we do base it on the unit price.
Thank you.
Ms. Curler?
Just maybe a follow-up on your comments, Dwayne, on the opinion of cost based on the 2021 unit prices. Is this a trend that you think we're gonna, that, that is expected to continue, that we're going to see bids coming in higher than 2021 prices?
Yes, across the board, and I believe that there is a council member that would agree with me that is in the construction business as well, and we will be talking about the next item on the agenda. We'll discuss a little bit more of what we're seeing and what we predict might happen in the marketplace in the coming years because of that inflation and supply chain issues.
Yeah, I know, Steve, you've definitely mentioned it on a number of occasions, and I just think it's important for us all to be aware and for our community to be aware that this is one of the things we're facing right now, is costs are probably going to be higher than maybe we even budgeted for things.
Yeah, this cost increase he's talked about is, this is, this is a very good price for the work that we're getting.
Yeah, technically, we'd have put 3% on, Dwayne did do that this year, and the, it was only 3% higher in a year where prices are starting to really ramp up, so our anticipation was this is an excellent price for where we're at and what we thought might happen. I want Dwayne to win the bid so that he can do the work, but he refused.
But he found $500.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comment? That was not a, okay, great. So let's move forward to roll call. Misty?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion decision on paving, patching, equipment purchases. It's a city council motion 22-4-2-2. Misty, can you read that motion?
City council motion 22-4-2-2, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement to purchase a mini asphalt paver for the street department.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to adopt, or to, sorry, let me, let me start over. I move to recommend, move to.
Approve?
Thank you.
Would that be a good word?
Or adopt.
Okay.
One of the two. I move to adopt motion 22-4-2-2, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement to purchase a mini asphalt paver for the street department.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidno, second by Mrs. Bishop. City staff, comment?
This one is pause.
Yeah, thank you. Excuse me, I'll just mention a couple of things. I think most of it's outlined in the memo, but number one, this one was also recommended by the Public Works Board. The money to make the purchase was budgeted, and the amount that's there is sufficient to purchase this. Basically, what we're doing is swapping a piece of equipment that we had put in the budget for this year with this mini paver, and we'll, we'll be able to get through with the change. What we're doing is swapping out a chipper for the mini paver. We think by a little more interdepartmental cooperation, we can, we can get through another couple of years with the chipper that we've got. So from that standpoint, this piece of equipment becomes a priority. And you'll note in the memo, there's a couple of things, three things actually, that are coming together. Number one is, we, the city had done this and this type of work in the past and stopped doing it because the asphalt plant was so far away that by the time the asphalt got to the city, it was too cold and, and not usable. A new plant is opening just four miles outside of town, which makes this much more possible, so we can do it that way. Secondly, we have had trouble in the past with contractors not being able to come in on our timeframe and finish some of these patches because they're small and they're, they're not real good in the profit margins for some of these companies. And then the third thing is that our experience has been, and maybe this is purely my opinion, but our experience has been that when we do the but our experience has been that when we do the patches, they're done better. So under this scenario, we think we can do them cheaper, better, and in a more timely fashion so that we don't have street patches open too often for the public. So we would ask that we be allowed to make this change from a chipper to the mini paver, and we can do our own small patches. I will note that this doesn't mean that we will do all of our patches. We simply won't be able to do that because of all the LSLs the lead service plans are replacing and other things. So we still will have to probably use some of the larger contractors for the larger patches. But we think we can take care of the smaller ones in a better fashion.
So any questions?
Paul, it's Catherine. I have two questions. The first is, what is the life cycle of this piece of equipment?
Yeah, the manufacturer tells us 10 years is a typical age. We believe we'll get more out of that, number one. It won't be used as much as a contractor uses it. And we are very used to having to take care of our equipment because we have to make it live longer. So we will be taking great care of this piece of equipment.
And that goes right into my second question. Do you have an estimate for the cost of maintenance, either yearly or overall?
I don't. It's a very simple machine. There are some wear points, the belt and things like that. I can't give you a good answer as to how long those will last, but those are things we'll have to keep an eye on. I think the maintenance costs are going to be minimal, but again, I can't give you a dollar figure on that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Quidnow?
Paul, it's Michelle. With regard to the wood chipper, are we looking at two to three more years with the wood chipper? Or is it going to be even longer than that?
I would say we can get through two to three years. The situation with the wood chipper is that we, right now, we have three of them. So the electric department has one, the parks department has one, and the streets department has one. And the issue with trees, of course, is that everybody is cutting and chipping at the same time. We do believe that we can delay the purchase of this, I would say at least two to three years. It'll take a little better coordination. It'll be not a case of just sharing the chipper, but probably sharing people a little bit, which is not a bad thing. And in the overall scheme of things, we can let a tree branch out a little longer than we can let a pothole sit. And so I think two to three years is a reasonable expectation.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Curler?
Thank you, Paul. This is Lisa Curler. I appreciate the analysis and in particularly just kind of that you and your team are keeping your eyes on, you know, what are the changing circumstances and making adjustments that are going to be the best benefit to the community? There's a lot of LSL replacements in my neighborhood last year, and I appreciated how most of those got quick, and there's some this year too on West Madison. I just appreciate when those do get filled in right away, especially on the high, in the high-traffic areas. And I think we would hear about it if, you know, we weren't able to get those holes filled in promptly with, especially with, you know, the spring, summer, fall season. So I appreciate your bringing this idea forward, and it does seem like it has a good cost benefit.
Thank you. And I can assure you that, yes, we do hear about rough roads, so.
Any other questions? I wanted to touch base on the mini paver. The one that's being proposed here is about $100 less than the next proposed item or the next quote. For that $10,000, I like the savings, but what is the difference between the two? I mean, that's quite significant. And what are we giving up for that $10,000? Not that I want to spend it, but just want to know.
Probably a couple of things, really. What, again, I said, it's really a very simple machine. This one's even more simple. Most of the adjustments or things that have to be done with it are going to be manual. There's, some of them have electronic controls that will do that sort of thing. So we're kind of giving up on that. The second thing is, it's actually manufactured locally. The company we're buying, buying it from is actually the manufacturer also, and so it's local. And the third thing, this one happens to be sitting on the lot. And I think the dealer would be really excited to get it off his lot.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, let's move to a rule call on city council motion 22-4-2-2. Misty?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion decision on Sandy Beach Restaurant Proposal, amending request, timeline, and meeting dates. City Council Motion 22-4-2-3. Misty, can you read that motion?
City Council Motion 22-4-2-3, to schedule a special meeting and invite the applicants to submit a proposals in response to Sandy Beach Food Service Request for Proposals to Review, Discuss, and Refine the Proposals.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to approve motion 22-4-2-3 to schedule a special meeting regarding the Sandy Beach Food Service Proposals.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields. So Dan, this was a motion that city council actually requested so we could move forward with the Sandy Beach Restaurant Proposals and talk with the parties. Do you have anything else to add to that?
No, not really. I think it's kind of a administrative function. It's inviting the applicants back in. It's allowing the council to communicate with those applicants on their desires, the council's desires after meeting and discussing in work session. I think Ms. Curler may have something to say about the actual motion that's in front of you. But I see this as really a communication with the public, just letting them know that this process is ongoing. We are still working with the applicants, and we're really refining and attempting to get to a point where a decision can be made.
All right, thank you. Comment? Ms. Curler, do you want to start this out?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I have some comments I guess I want to share with my fellow council members, and then I'm going to make a motion to amend. You know, since we've received these two proposals in response to the RFP and we have questions on both, you know, I'm certainly in support of this motion. It seems like the next right step to meet with the applicants. But as, I've been looking back on my year on the council and we've been working on this restaurant issue, it seems like we just kind of are taking like one step at a time. And in thinking about all the conversations we've had on Sandy Beach Restaurant, especially in the last couple of weeks, I think it's good to step back and say, okay, well, where are we trying to get? And what should be our overall process instead of what's just our next step? So I feel like we're hearing a lot from citizens. We had probably 30 people sitting in on our work session recently. They're, you know, they're telling us that they want to have an opportunity, you know, to comment specifically. We've also been talking about our committees, our stakeholders in the community, and how are we going to get input? And I think this would be a perfect time to ask and engage, you know, ask for that input, engage that, and show folks that we want to have their involvement in this process rather than just taking the one step of scheduling a special meeting. So with all that in mind, I want to make a motion to amend motion 22-4-2-3. I've handed out a draft that Attorney Drescher assisted me with. And so I'll just briefly summarize. The first two pages show in the yellow highlighting the changes that I'm proposing. And then the second two pages is a clean copy of the amended motion. And so essentially, what it does is three things. First, it clarifies just that the city council, we're just evaluating the options. It's not just our goals, it needs to be kind of the whole community's goals. Secondly, it recognizes that the Economic Development Commission and Legendary Lake Mills are folks with expertise in commercial development and operation, and that we want to ask for their input. And then it acknowledges that our citizens are key stakeholders in this. And so we want, I'm proposing, that we would do a community survey to get their input. And so both of these steps, engaging our committee and Legendary Lake Mills, and then doing a community survey, I'm proposing would occur before the council would take any action on awarding a contract.
Do we need to verbalize these?
Well, what I want first is a motion to amend that specifically states, I think you've summarized them appropriately, that maybe refers to the motion that's in front of you that's labeled 22-4-2-3A. That is the amended version. Then you're all on the same page with regard to the language that's actually incorporated in the amendment. But we need to go through that process. The motion in second.
So the motion has been made?
I believe so. I can repeat it.
I can recap it.
Okay.
As we, before we vote, if that's okay?
Sure.
So is there a second?
Second.
So there's an amendment to city council motion 22-4-2-3. A motion made by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Why don't I go ahead and recap it without my glasses? So moving down...
Mr. Waters, would you like me to read it? Are you having trouble?
Go ahead.
Okay.
If you could, that would be great.
The fourth whereas is amended to strike language the city council has started to refine its goals regarding, and replaces that language with, "The city council is evaluating restaurant development options and food service at Sandy Beach Park, and would like to further discuss the proposals submitted with the applicants." Minor change there. The next whereas is new. Whereas the Economic Development Commission and Legendary Lake Mills are local stakeholders whose knowledge and expertise in commercial business development and operation can assist the council in evaluating the two proposals. The following whereas is also added. Whereas the citizens of Lake Mills are key stakeholders, and the city council values their input regarding service options at Sandy Beach Park. Then, be it therefore moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, there is an added paragraph, the second paragraph. The city council of the city of Lake Mills further directs the city manager to request that the Economic Development Commission and Legendary Lake Mills Board review the two proposals and provide comment and questions regarding the two proposals to the city council in advance of the upcoming work session. And then the third paragraph was also added. The city council of the city of Lake Mills further directs the city manager to develop a community survey to obtain citizen input regarding general food service options at Sandy Beach Park, with the community survey approved by the city council and administered prior to awarding any contracted food service at Sandy Beach Park. So those are the amendments. Do you want me to review the rest of the motion as well? Or?
No, that's already, it's documented. So thank you, Mr. Drescher. So on the amendment, we're open for discussion or comment at this point. Is there any discussion or comment on the amendment? Seeing none, let's move to...
Mr. Waters, I was sort of raising my hand. I just want to say...
I didn't quite recognize that.
Yeah, I know. I gave you a slight wave.
Go ahead.
Ms. Curler, I think what you did here directly captures what we've been talking about in our work sessions and goal setting and trying to better obtain city feedback. And so I really appreciate you doing that, and I do support these measures here and these additions that you've made. So thank you. That's all.
All right, any other comment? Or questions? All right, seeing none, let's move to a rule call on motion 22-4-2-3A, which is the amendment.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, so the amended motion passed? Thank you.
Let's follow through and actually adopt now, have a subsequent vote now that it has been amended, and adopt the amended motion.
All right.
And that's the standing motion that Ms. Bishop made and Mr. Field seconded.
So the amendment's been accepted?
The amendment has been accepted. Now we're going to vote on the motion.
Now we're voting on that motion?
Yeah, as amended.
So we're voting on the motion as amended? One more time, Misty?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. I think we're good now, thank you. All right, moving on. Resolution 22-14, public depositories. Can you read that resolution, Misty?
Resolution 22-14, Designating Official Public Depositories.
All right, can we have a motion for resolution 22-14?
I move approval of resolution 22-14 Designating Official Public Depositories.
Thank you.
I'll second.
So motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Public comment? Public comment, staff comment? The public, if they want to comment, I guess they can, but...
Sam, you want to comment?
Yeah, this is just an annual resolution that we do for the depositories that the city uses. It's just a, as Betsy would describe it, a housecleaning type resolution.
It's an annual thing, just like the newspaper that's right behind this.
And there's no changes from last year to this year.
Okay. Any questions? All right, can we move to a rule call?
Ms. Quidnow?
On resolution 22-14, excuse me. Go ahead.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Next is resolution 22-15. Can you read that, Misty?
Resolution 22-15 Designating Official Newspaper.
All right, can we have a motion on that resolution?
Move to approve resolution 22-15 Designating Official Newspaper.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Field, second by Ms. Curler. Staff comment?
So this is most important to the city clerk because she's responsible for all the publications, which have, go through the designated newspaper by statute. So Misty, you have any comments?
This is just the annual designation, no change from previous years. And yes, very important.
Statutorily required. We have a local paper, and we've had a longstanding relationship with them.
All right. Any comment or questions? Okay, rule call on resolution 22-15.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. Item F, Ordinance 1233, Amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance, Section 548-3, License Issuance Renewal, Suspension, or Revocation of Sidewalk Cafes First Reading. Misty, can you read ordinance 1233?
Ordinance 1233, Amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance, Section 548-3, License Issuance Renewal, Suspension, or Revocation. Whereas, under the existing ordinance applicants for Sidewalk Cafe, licenses are subject to a public hearing requirement for the initial application and annual renewal of their Sidewalk Cafe license. The city council of the city of Lake Mills seeks to streamline this process for applicants and Sidewalk Cafe license holders. And whereas, under the proposed amendment, applicants seeking a Sidewalk Cafe license will no longer be subject to the notice and public hearing requirements, and the application fee has been reduced. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does hereby amend Section 548-3, License Issuance Renewal, Suspension, or Revocation, and as ordained as follows. Section 1, City of Lake Mills Ordinance, Section 548-3, License Issuance Renewal, Suspension, or Revocation is hereby amended as follows. Section 548-3, License Issuance Renewal, Suspension, or Revocation. Sub C, the application fee for new or renewal license is $75 and shall be submitted to the city clerk the city clerk prior to administrative review of such application and prior to placing such application on the council agenda for council decision granting or denying the Section E, the licensing period for sidewalk cafe licenses shall be from July 1 to June 30. Prior to expiration of such license, the license holder shall make application and pay the application fee to be considered for renewal of the license. Section 2, ordinance language to be repealed is stricken. Ordinance language to be added is underlined. When revising, compiling, or printing this ordinance for inclusion in the code, the material that has been stricken and the underlying need not be included. Section 3, adoption of this ordinance amendment has been sponsored by City Council Representative Kathryn Bishop. Section 4, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 5, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Thank you, Misty. So this is a first reading tonight, so there is no action required by council. Kathryn, did you have any comment on this?
So my comments are really in the whereas section of the ordinance that was presented. Really what this does is that permits, if passed, there's no longer public hearing requirement for permits issued that are either new or for renewals. The proposed language means the permit could be applied for anytime in the year. There's no deadline for application. So let's say you were to apply in August and you wanted to use the last two months of the summer. You could do that. It would still come before council for final approval, but you wouldn't have, you wouldn't be subject to that deadline earlier in the year. And then, what's the other one? I had a note here. The main other one is that the application fee has been reduced. So since we took out the public hearing requirement, that took out a lot of the cost, and then we updated the amount for what it would cost the city to actually take in the application, review it, and all of those processes, and that ended up in an ultimate reduction in fees.
So by removing the public hearing, does that take the community out of the loop where we don't get community feedback? How does that impact the community feedback portion of it?
So that was a huge question, whether to remove that language or not. And what it came down to in my decision in writing this ordinance and the redrafting is that if there was an issue with the sidewalk licensing area, we would probably hear about it anyway because we do have public comment at every meeting. We are accessible for our constituents. And there's also a process to have that license revoked. And so if the license is revoked anytime in the year, that sort of ends the problem that may have been reported, and then the person would still have to apply again the next year. It's an annual renewal. And did we say it's an annual renewal in this year, or is it two years? No, this seems an annual. Yeah, sorry. We were talking about something else. So they would still have to apply for it again the next year, and the council would still get to look at it again for ultimate approval. It's the same way we do other licenses in the city.
How does the revoking process work?
Yeah, so hopefully, Dan can tell me a little bit more about that, but there is a process, and we are allowed to revoke a license if, I believe, they go outside the bounds of, you know, the other provisions in this section. And if there were an issue that was brought up, I think Dan can talk more about that specific process, not to put you on the spot.
Sure, no, that's...
Or we can review it at the next reading, one of the two.
We certainly can. You don't have the entire ordinance language in front of you, but there are stricter and requirements that are contained therein. They have to comply with all other law that's effective. They have to stay in line with their site plan, and that's a big part of the administrative process. There is a requirement that a site plan is submitted, and then it's complied with once it is actually a licensed opportunity, a permitted opportunity. So with regard to revocation, we're complaint-driven. We need those complaints to basically take action. But in the event that there is a complaint, they would have an opportunity to remedy that. But if they fail to, through some course of time, some review process, then it would be brought back in front of you for a revocation hearing.
And that could come from a City Council member or a staff member?
Or the public generally. If the complaint, the process we have in place right now is the neighborhood service officer, if receiving a complaint, would go and investigate it and then submit orders, provide a written document that says this is the violations that we found. This is how you have to remedy them to comply. And in the event that they, the applicant or the licensee fails to do that, then they run the risk of revocation.
And those remedies and the ability to revoke license have always been in effect and are not changed.
Correct.
In my proposed amendments here.
The, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
The ordinance really, I think the crux of it is both the reduction of that fee but also the removal of that public hearing. That's a time-consuming process with regard to notice. It's a relatively expensive process if it's not necessary. In this circumstance, I'm not aware of anything that explicitly requires a public notice and hearing to be honored in the event that you're going to license a sidewalk cafe. So in that vein, it was kind of established if it's not necessary, if it's not statutorily required, then why do we have it when we have administrative functions that can go through this and you still have the ability to approve that license? The key point that you picked up on is the public involvement, and this does arguably remove that, an aspect of that. It will still be on an agenda for a licensing action by the council, but there is no public notice outside of that. There is no posting in the newspaper that says this is going in front of the council for a hearing. The public is welcome to attend that hearing and to voice their opinion on the matter. So there's a little bit of a removal of notice there, but it is still available. It still will show up on an agenda. You can basically guarantee that it's going to come onto the agenda at a certain time of the year annually. And, I mean, I think from an efficiency standpoint, it accomplishes some goals at the expense of maybe a little bit of public notice.
So there is currently a newspaper notification?
Yeah, that publication requirement, and that is part of the cost that was calculated in the ultimate reduction. That's an expensive process.
So it was expensive, and removing that is what allowed us to get the fee down. And my hope is that business owners would keep doing the sidewalk cafes, and that maybe we could even incentivize more business owners in the downtown area to do those if the fees are reduced and if the process is streamlined.
Ms. Quidno?
So that leads to my next question. How many licenses for sidewalk cafes are we issuing per year?
Two per year currently.
Okay. So it's pretty minor, but we're hoping for more.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Who knows?
That number's ebbed and flowed just a little bit through time, but we do have two current licensees.
Okay.
Any other questions or comment? Ms. Curler?
Yeah, I guess I have a couple of other questions, and if the answers aren't known now, maybe we could get those for the second or third reading, you know, just so that we have full information. So I would like, I guess, a little more information on like how this will change the staff time and just like in general, how much time is required for staff to, you know, do the administrative review plus the public hearing or public noticing versus what would be, you know, different under the change. I'm also curious to know if there are any other licenses in our code that have that Class 1 notice so that we're not just, you know, looking at one thing, but is there, should we be looking at all the things that require public notice and, you know, as a group? And then on the fee specifically, well, I don't know if this is, maybe this is more of a discussion item, but I'm curious, like, how does this fee line up with, say, other right-of-way encroachments or other ways that the city allows activities on public property? You know, how would that compare? Just so that we can see, you know, like, what's the reasonable fee for something like this?
Sure. I don't have a specific answer for you on those two points. For your first point, generally, how does this change staff time? I mean, publishing the notice, and Misty can maybe help me, but that seems like to me the bulk of the time because you have to write the notice, you have to submit it. You have to calculate how much it costs per statutory and Department of Administration regulations and requirements. And so, again, cutting out that bulk of the time also cut the expense to our applicants. But then the $75 fee, I mean, that fee overall hadn't been changed since, I want to say at least 2012 because that looks like the last time.
Changed then, right.
Yeah, that was the last time this was amended, and I don't know if the fee was amended back then. So we're looking at at least ten years where there's been no addressing what the fee is at all in relation to it.
And that was established in 2006, correct?
Oh, okay.
I believe that's right.
I think it was 2006. I don't believe that the fee amount has changed at all. I think there's just an amendment in 2012, I thought.
Yeah, and I don't think that changed the fee either, Misty.
No, it didn't.
Okay. And Ms. Curler, to your second point, I have not looked for other ordinances that have a Class 1 public hearing requirement. I don't mind taking that up, you know, as we move forward, but this was just one instance that has come to my attention a few times, and so I wanted to take it on.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Hana. Appreciate you bringing the issues.
I can also...
Go ahead, Misty.
I can comment on the other public hearing notices for this type of license or for permitting, not talking about zoning or anything, but we're talking about tobacco, alcohol, and all these come around annually. Liquor license does require a public hearing notice. However, that's by state statute. That's not by ordinance.
So as the, several of the sidewalk cafes included liquor, serving alcohol, is that part of the expansion of their premises or, and is that why they held a public hearing? No, because it didn't seem normal to hold a public hearing for those types of things. The other thing is, is that staff time is, we have more staff time in reviewing the site because there are a lot of sidewalk issues. You have to make sure that there aren't any restrictions that cut your sidewalk down to below ADA requirements and that you, that the sidewalk is being used in an appropriate fashion and those types of things. So, you know, some of them can get away with just, if you're not serving alcohol, you can get away with just tables and chairs. If you are, then you've got to have fencing or some other type of thing. And so we have to go through a full review of all the processes that they're involved in and understand what kind of application they've actually submitted.
Yeah, so if we could get maybe just from staff, you know, some kind of general estimate about what that review time involves minus the public hearing or the public notification requirements, because that would be the change, or that would be the workload that still is remaining for staff with this change. Thanks.
So I'm going to point out a specific business, Lewis Street. They have a patio that, that's not, is that considered a sidewalk cafe or is that on their own property?
No, and you'll see a number of properties that have that. Al Mariachi comes to mind. So they have that outdoor seating. In those two specific circumstances, it's wholly encompassed on their parcel, their property. Sidewalk cafes are specifically an extension of the property into the right-of-way, the sidewalks themselves. So if city-owned property, these are licensed use and not your property. However, with regard to like the liquor licensing issue, they can, businesses can expand their premises as long as they define that as such, and they have a license, they have permission to do that. So that's where we kind of have this hybrid situation, as Steve stated.
And because it's in the right-of-way, I mean, my perspective is that's why the city retains so much leeway to revoke it if there is an issue.
Need further questions tonight? Again, we do have two more readings, so we have more opportunities to address this and maybe suggest amendments if needed. So, all right. Thank you. So next item on the agenda is Recommendations for Future Agenda. The floor is open.
Mr. Waters, I would assume that you're going to be doing board and commission appointments for council members and for citizens that need those re-upps. What process do you want to follow for that?
It's a great point. Let's go ahead and address that. If I would have missed it here, you would have got emails. But I would like to take care of the council appointments at our next meeting. So why don't I go ahead and send out a memo to all of you asking what your top three preferences are? And we'll take that into consideration. I'll have discussions with all of you on the direction that we're going to go there and make sure we're all on the same page. Does that make sense? And then we do have some board commissions that have some new terms coming up, 2022 terms, and I do have some candidates for some of those roles. And if there's anyone in the community that's interested in any of those open positions, please forward those to the city staff, and they'll get those to me so that we can make sure that we're making proper recommendations to those boards. So there will be a slew of those also at the next meeting. So if you know anybody, direct them towards those openings. And a lot of it's already posted on our city website where there is openings. So you can see that on the city website. Anything else for future agendas at this point? Of course, the Sandy Beach thing, we'll be moving on that here in the next couple of meetings. Sandy Beach Restaurant. We'll need to look at that and probably look at what type of workshop, closed session that we need to address that in. And of course, we want to be public as well, but there's some confidential information in the beginning negotiations that may not be appropriate for public at this point, but those things will become public in the future. But, yeah. Anything else? All right. So the meeting stands adjourned at 8:05. Thank you.